Good evening and welcome to the September 2022 meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees. We're glad that you're with us this evening. We have a fairly full agenda, so we will get started right away. Our first action is the approval of the minutes from our meeting in August. Did anyone have any comments or corrections? Or is there a motion to approve? Judy?
I approve.
Okay, and Brett seconds, thank you. This meeting is open to the public. It is also available for viewing on YouTube as well as on this television station. And we will have our town board liaison, Lynda Cole, give her report now.
Okay, so the main thing that's happening right now is tomorrow night, the Finance Director Barbara Trudo will present our tentative budget for 2023. So if you're interested in watching, you know, what is being proposed by the Town of Penfield for the town budget, please watch it tomorrow night. And there'll be a public hearing two weeks following for any kind of input people would like to see in person. And there's always, it'll be up on the website as soon as she's done with her tentative budget presentation, if anybody has any questions, concerns. You know where to reach the town. There'll be a place where you can, you can send your comments or concerns. Is there anything else anybody has any questions about?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, would you like to give a report from the Friends?
Yes, just as a reminder, the Friends is a non-public organization that's run by volunteers dedicated to providing additional support to the Penfield Library in various matters. They just had their annual book sale, which raised over $20-plus thousand dollars. It was very successful. They're very happy with it. The one concern that they do have right now is just their trailer, the storage they use. I guess there was a water issue with it, and they're working with the town facility manager once he returns to figure out what the long-term solution will be to fix that. So that's their biggest area of need right now.
Good, good.
Do we save any of the books that are not sold at the sale? Do you know, Brett?
I'm not sure.
They normally do, but this year they could not because we don't have a place for them.
Ah. Well, it was a wonderful turnout. I thought it was terrific. Barbara, you were there. We worked. We worked on the sale.
There were a lot of people there, and they had, it was the first time that they had had a regular large sale, well, since 2019. So they had books from 2020, 2021, and this year. And they had so many that on Sunday, they sent out emails to people, and I don't know if it was just people who had been at the sale or anybody that they had an email address for saying, "We have so many books, please come by and take whatever you want." And there were, there were people who were doing that. So it was, there were an awful lot of books, and they did, they, they did have to, they have a service that comes and takes them away for recycling afterwards. So they were doing that. But that's good to know.
Yeah.
Maybe next, maybe for next month, they could give you kind of a breakdown on how they did with a little more detail. And it would be nice if they can get someone from the town to fix the trailer. I know that there were some books that were damaged and couldn't be sold, and they had, they were dampened, some had black mold, and they had to just kind of quarantine those and not keep those with the rest of the books. So it'd be interesting to hear how they did.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Niraj, are you ready for the finance report?
Yes.
And then I have something from Deanna to hand you.
Okay, cool. So the finance report, if we just look at the Gift and Memorial Fund, we're a little bit over $144,000. If we switch over to the budget, the budget numbers that you see here are eight months out of the year through August. So our standard threshold that I compare things to is 67%, eight divided by 12. And we're looking at total expenses. Total expenses is coming in about 55%, so that's quite a bit better than budget. The largest line item is the wages-salary line item. That's roughly in line, about 63% to 67%. And we do have opportunities on the materials and the contractuals, the biggest opportunities. It's at 45% and 41%. So it's, it's a good month, and we're coming in good for the year.
Two or three months ago, I think you'll remember that Rhonda came to us and talked about the 80th anniversary celebration and asked us if we would commit some money from the Gift and Memorial Fund to help pay for some of the activities. And we had said we would contribute between $2,000 and $2,500. And I have receipts here that total $1,935.45. So could we have a motion to approve that expense? And then Niraj, I'm going to give this to you. It's got an outline of what the library paid and what's been reimbursed, what, what we'll, we need to pay the library for this amount. But then there are three separate people who need checks.
Okay.
So their, their names are there, so I could give this to you. But before we do that, Rachel?
Make a motion. I'll second.
Thanks, and Jen for seconded. Thank you. Do you want to, here Niraj? Thank you. Under Personnel, Rhonda, you have something.
Under Personnel, we have two new employees. Catherine Chance is our new program aide at 20 hours per week. Brian Petty is our new circulation aide at 16 hours per week.
And you would like us to approve their appointments?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve? Brett? And Melissa second. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else under Personnel?
No, just that the new, the committee will be forming to replace the leaving trustees.
Yes, and do you have those materials?
Do not have those materials.
Is it the same Personnel Committee that we're talking about?
So Denise is going to be chairing the search committee.
Oh, okay.
So Denise will do that, and the materials, the questions, all those things remain the same. We have all that written down.
Those are in Dropbox.
Dropbox.
They're in Dropbox, but I can find it and send you the link.
Do we have like a timeline that we need to follow?
Yes, there's a procedure, and it has timeframes for everything.
Perfect.
So I think the first thing to do would probably be to get that material and then look at it and make an announcement, draft an announcement, and send that to Marie Cinty and also to Chris Tane, who's her Communications Director, and ask them to post it on the town website. And then we could also ask Rhonda to have that posted on the library website. And we've also had announcements on the electronic bulletin board. There are applications that people fill out, and maybe we could have some of those at the desk in case people come by, or they could email you for them.
There have also been just printed out announcements, kind of posted throughout the library and stands, like near the fireplace, things like that.
Social media, did we mention Facebook or?
Yeah, social media.
Yep, I know we did that in the past.
Yes.
I think most of the outlets that we use are outlined in that procedure, but I'm sure adding more wouldn't hurt.
More is always better. Strategic planning?
I don't have any updates this month.
Okay, thank you.
Other than we did talk about it, we did quite a bit of outreach this month, and we brought the plan everywhere we went. We did talk to people about it.
That's great.
Did anybody, did you get anybody to take it at the Chili Fest?
To take it? No, but they had listened to us talk.
I saw them there. I was just wondering if, did you get feedback?
They were busy eating chili and drinking beer, but.
Wasn't a priority, okay.
Well, the idea is that they know that we have one.
Exactly.
And it's all so nicely formatted that it makes a very professional impression, I Megan is not here to talk about bylaws. We have some bylaws that are being introduced today, two policies, a volunteer policy and the public expression policies. Those were in your packet, so if you would like to review those, and we will vote on them next month. And.
Did you want us to talk about them a little bit, or?
Would you like to?
Well, I can tell you what has changed, what we.
Well, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, so the volunteer policy is very much like the former policy. We've made slight changes. The teens who come in as a teen program to volunteer normally don't have to have printed parental permission, and we wanted to make sure that those programs could continue as they are. So we did add something about those teen programs that are led by our young adult librarian. It's not the same as a volunteer who comes in on his or her own and works independently. These are programs. So we just made a slight change to that. And the second policy, the public expression policy, in my experience, it is beneficial to have a total time period provided. Otherwise, sometimes if you have a situation that you have a lot of people speaking, they can somehow take up the entire time of the, so we just added a 30-minute max of time for public speaking. And of course, we can always change that during the meeting if we wanted to, if we had a situation where we needed to. But this way, we have a policy that where we can say, okay, you know, at this point, we are done with this particular discussion, and we need to do our business because a library board meeting is not a place for people to just hash their opinions. It has to be a place of business. We have things we need to do.
Well, I also saw the time limit in there of three minutes, which I think is pretty lengthy.
It is.
People think that three minutes is a short time until you've actually got to stand up and prepare something for a discussion. But I think that, so I thought that was a very fair amount of time.
It's standard to other libraries, you know, whenever I bring suggestions to, to edit a policy, I always do a great deal of research and see what other libraries are doing before I present any ideas. Other than that, we just made sure that people who wish to address the board understand that they have to be here ahead of time, they have to sign in with our library secretary so that there's a manner of procedure here, so that people aren't just, you know, jumping in all the time.
We haven't really had that problem.
What's that?
We haven't really had that problem.
We haven't had that problem, but in the future, we might. I mean, if we stick to our strategic plan and one day have on our agenda, you know, a major renovation or perhaps a new building, we will have, hopefully, a lot more activity. We want the input of our community.
Yes.
So.
Very good. Denise, do you have anything?
I do not.
Communications, okay. So we are up to Rhonda with the Director's Report.
Great, so I wanted to highlight what a successful summer it was in terms of programming, our adult, our children's, our young adult summer reading. All three went very, very well. It was our first year where we had regular program in the building, and we, I think people were just really happy to be back. We had very large numbers. We had very happy participants. Overall, it was just a great summer for our library users and our library staff. We had several meetings that I talked about. I wanted to mention that we, the Town of Penfield has a new program where departments can nominate their own staff members for recognition. And so we did nominate our children's, teen, and adult program librarians because of the phenomenal work they did over the summer. So that was really cool because they were in the town e-newsletter, they were up on all of the electronic bulletin boards, they were in our Facebook. We took a picture of all of the staff members together, and it was just nice. It was just very positive and fun, and I think it, I think it's really important to tell our staff members when they've done a good job. So this was a great way for the entire town to do that. I did go to a webinar on grant seeking, so we, I will talk about that when the time comes. We did a lot of outreach, as I said, and the biggest one was the Tasting the Blues event, and we interacted with about 400 people. We made our own chili. We took a children's recipe. You could tell it was a children's recipe. It was very simple. But people liked it because it wasn't spicy. And Natalie came with me, and Annie came with me, and it was just such, such a fun activity, and it was such, it was, it was just so wonderful to reach out to so many people and, and talk about the library. We had a whole table set up, we gave our prizes, we did games, a lot of fun. And thank you to all of you who came along and supported us.
Can I just say one thing about that?
Yes.
Rhonda also had one of the more creative presentations of chili, because most people just had like the little white paper cup, and you've got a chili sample in that. But in the little white paper cups from the library, there was a corn chip. And so the chili was on that, and you could use the corn chip as a spoon. And it was, and people were really, people loved it.
People loved that, and whatever votes we got, I think, was because of the Frito. And honestly, the only reason we added it was because we knew that our skills were so good.
Well, thank you for attending, because the library hasn't always been represented at town events, so that was really, really nice to see.
And I think we'll do more and more because we really just loved it.
Okay, great.
And people really liked it, and the chili was good. I tasted all of them. You know, some people have to just do that. But it was, but I thought that the chili was good, and the corn chips were really inspired.
Yes, and that's pretty much it. That's my report.
Are there any questions?
I just, when I found out that you were going to be at the Tasting of the Blues, I was just, just really, I loved it because we really never had the library go out in the community and everything, so I just want to thank you.
No, and thank the entire staff, because it certainly was not me, it was all of us. So I'm glad you, I'm glad you agree it's important. Thank you.
I was, this is off the topic, but how was the Sunday family activity?
It was actually a very nice event. We didn't get the crowd that we had hoped for. I don't know why, maybe.
It looked like rain.
It was lovely, you know? I mean, the people who came enjoyed it very much. We had cookies, we had tattoos, you know, temporary tattoos. We had a lot of teens volunteering, we had some of the Rotary, Rotary members volunteering, which was nice. We just didn't have that, as many families as we had hoped. But today, if, we can talk about the 80th anniversary that's going on this week. Today, we had at 3:00 cake and, what did we call it? Cake and, I forgot what we called it, but we gave.
Cake and swag.
Cake, cake and swag, that's the word. Cake and swag. So we, some of the staff members and I just sliced up a big giant cake, a sheet cake, and handed it out, and we talked to 105 people today. And gave them, you know, their bags and their cake. And yesterday, we, I think, no, Mon, yes, Monday is yesterday, I'm sorry, I've been working a lot. Monday at 10:00, the first 50 people who came got the library bag. If anybody, I don't know if you can all see it, but we did create a commemorative library bag, one for adults and one for children, so we have two different kinds. And so we gave 50 away yesterday, and we gave about 100 away today, and.
So if they want to see it on camera?
Yes.
Here is the grown-up library bag.
That's the grown-up one. It's a canvas bag, and it was, we purposely chose a model that would hold library books, obviously. So tomorrow at 4:00, we're giving out another 50 bags. Thursday, we have a 1942 movie, I think it's at 6:00 or 6:30. And 2:00, we have a book discussion of a 1942 book. It wasn't actually written in 1942, it's about that time period. And then Friday, we have a tea party at 2:00 with local history. So all of these activities were planned with the intent of bringing to light the history of the library, where we were and where we are today, and just a positive way to contact and to reach out and make connections with our community members.
And I think it's doing that.
I think it's doing that. It is. People are happy.
I think it's, I think it's exciting. I know, I was at Wegmans, and I was on my way there on Sunday, and I said, "I'm going to a celebration of the library's 80th anniversary." And the clerk said, "Really? Has it been that long?" And, you know, it's nice, I just think that it's, it's good to engage people.
It is, it really is. And I think people are so supportive when they think about the fact that we've been here for 80 years.
Yes.
It's nice.
I think so.
And whoever did the display that's in the front of the library, I've been there like, probably like four times, just kind of going through the binders and everything and kind of reviewing where the library was, starting from the Friends and, or the Friday Club, and then going on. It's just really wonderful to kind of see the history.
That is Miriam, so Miriam Arnold, if you're listening, thank you for that. Very creative. But we have artwork pretty much all over the library right now. We just created a new banner for the front by the circulation desk to note that we're open now 80 years, and we have the hallway display case filled with memorabilia. So we'll probably keep it up for a while because it took a little time to create. But I'm glad you liked it, thank you.
Yeah, I like the pictures you sent, Niraj.
Yeah, the photo albums are amazing. Yes, it's, you know, when you think about it, all of those years, they were saving everything, you know? And it's, I'm sure that people who live in Penfield will see, you know, their mothers, their fathers, their aunts and uncles, if they go through the pages, because it goes back really to the 1940s, those photos. It's amazing what they've kept.
I, I saw a picture, I mean, there was, there were pictures of the library moving from the five-mile line location to the current location. It was such an amazing event, a volunteer event of the community. All of a sudden, I was flipping through the binders, and I saw my classmate, who was like right in the front row, that you couldn't miss him. And it was the class of '92. I said, "Oh, my God." So then I kept on looking, and there were more classmates. So then I posted it on Facebook, and you wouldn't believe how many people tagged themselves. They were like, "I can't believe this is happening." So now I have class of '92, class of '93, because there, all of those ages were, were helping, and they all have their stories. And it was amazing, and then I just kept on going, and lo and behold, I saw a class, our library brochure, the only library brochure that was there, the staff brochure, it was of 1992, and that's when I was a page. And my brother was a page, so it was just very interesting to just go through the whole history.
Lots of nostalgia.
Correct.
Yes. Well, I think they were very happy times, so it is nice to look back.
It is. And now, we need to, under new business, we need to review the policies that were introduced last month. Rhonda, do you want to walk us through? We have, I believe, the display and posting, the.
Right, so the first one is the display and posting policy. We did discuss this last month, and we did talk about our changes, but basically, the biggest change in this one is that we needed a policy that would protect us should somebody feel that an item that's displayed should not be displayed. So we needed a policy and a procedure for both, for that, so we included that. And it's very similar to the idea of collection development. Because if we have something showing in the library, it's the same thing, it's very similar to lending it out as a material. So the two policies are very similar. So it, it just protects us, and it gives a, a procedure, it makes available a procedure for patrons who feel the need to communicate with us. We will listen, of course, we will take their ideas into consideration, and then we will come up with a decision.
Does it also include the display cases that are out in the hall?
It does.
Yeah.
All, all display, any, any display related to the library, yes.
Is there a motion to approve this policy? Is Linda Denise? Thank you. Is there a second? Rachel? Thank you. All in favor? Yes, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Circulation fines?
Next one is the fines and fees waiver policy. This was pretty much unchanged. We just updated it.
Is there a motion to approve this one? Thank you, Niraj. Judy seconded. All in favor?
The third one is staff and volunteer borrowing policy. We lowered the, the amount of fines that a person could accumulate. We just felt that it was too high. We made it $15 instead of, I think it had been 25, I think, because employees and volunteers need to be aware of when their materials are due and not take advantage of any kind of special, special preferential treatment. That was redundant, but preferential treatment. So that was basically what we did, we simply lowered it. I do get reports every month about staff or volunteers who are not on time, and I can always speak to somebody, but policy is always best.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Niraj? Jen has seconded. Okay, all in favor? Passed.
And the last one is the internet use and safety policy. We really wanted to be very careful about the age of children who were using the computers out in the main room, not in the children's room, but in the main room. And so we did lower the age threshold for that. So if you're under 10, you do need adult supervision to use the adult computers. We just felt that having an eight- or nine-year-old among the adults who are at the computers was probably not the safest idea. So that's the biggest change. Other than that, we took out a great deal of procedure that was part of the policy. The policy even listed the number of computers that we had, and that's ever-changing. So we took all of that out and made, and took the policy and just updated it.
Okay. Is there a motion to, Melissa? And it's Jen? Thank you. All in favor? Great. Those are approved. Thank you very much. And now I would like to ask Niraj if he would talk to us. We had a couple of people, Brett was one, who made a suggestion on how we could improve the income that we received on the Gift and Memorial Fund. And the other one was Kathy Weber from the Penfield Public Library Foundation, and both Brett and Kathy suggested that we do something where we would put in at least $10,000, and we could get a much higher rate of interest. I'm not sure that I understand it that well, and I did ask Barbara Trudo if there were requirements for, under the Town of Penfield, how we could spend our money. And Brett, I know you had asked if we were considered a town entity, and that fund is under the library's EIN number. It should have been set up as a separate account, but it was not when it was done in the, around 1990, and none of us were here then. We don't know what they were thinking, but we are now stuck with this. So whatever the requirements are for a municipality, they apply to us. And Barbara had sent a document that said we had to work with a, a financial institution that has an office in the Town of Penfield. It doesn't have to be like chartered in Penfield, but it has, like Canadegu National Bank has an office, Family First. but it has, like Canadegor National Bank has an office, Family First Credit Union has an office, Chase has an office. I mean, you know, there are a lot of banks who have offices and credit unions that have offices. So we need to keep that in mind. And she said we could do something where we could increase the amount. All that being said, on one hand, on the other hand, the one conversation I had with Tony LaFountain about this, he said, you need to spend that money down. So I'm not sure if we want to do a lot, but I asked Naras if he would look into it because I'm kind of, this is not my area of expertise.
Yeah. So when I was asking questions, then it's not as straightforward as it may seem, like what we can do or what we can't. So right now, I'm in the process of gathering information, just to see what, what are our options. But aside from being in the, in the finance committee and writing checks and being responsible for the balances, I think there is, aside from policy reason, the one thing that I was thinking is, yes, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to get the best returns and all that stuff. But also, we should also think about like the security of our funds, right? So there is a benefit of, I feel, and this is a discussion that we might want to have, of a person having to go into a branch where they show ID and then they, like if I have to go to Family First, they always ID me and make sure that I'm authorized to look at the balance or make any changes. Now, if we go to an online, let's just pretend that it's an option or something, I would probably discourage that, only because, yes, we might gain a percent or two, but is it worthwhile to lose the security of the, like the funds, especially, we're not an individual that's going to be there forever. We're, we're rotating boards. So if you, if you have something that's not in person, then I think there's a lot of risk that's involved. So again, we're talking about a few percentage points. But again, before I was really interested in getting, who doesn't want more money? I like more money. But, but then I started thinking about it as an attorney, right? And I said that, you know what? Security should be our first. Risk should be our first. Protecting our money should be our first. And then if we can gain a couple dollars, that's gravy. So that's my thinking right now. And I, I mean, I love money and I, but I think that's what I tell my clients too, right? Let's think risk first. And if we can get some money afterwards, that's gravy. So I'm still in the information gathering right now and I'll, I'll get back to you guys.
Okay. And we don't have to do anything until the end of the year when our.
Yeah. So like actually, I'm going to be asking for guidance on a couple CDs that are maturing. I don't think I'm going to have like very practical information right at that moment, like what we need to do. But there are some CDs that are maturing in, in end of November and early December. So next month, I'm going to ask for guidance on how much we want to reinvest or what we, what we want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask why Tony feels this money should be spent down? I, I just, I, I don't understand that.
It's, it's a lot of money to have in a municipal account. And we can spend it ourselves or the state of New York will help us spend it.
I see.
So I thought it was better to start spending it.
Then let's start renovating the library.
How does that coincide with our minimum requirement?
Well, our minimum requirement is going to have to change. I mean, now we have $40,000. We're committed to spend 20,000 to 25,000 for the Bremen Room furniture. And who knows what the price may be by the time we get in there. It may be up. And we want to look at what we're going to get. I went to a meeting on Saturday at a municipal building in Bloomfield and they had really wonderful chairs. They were, well, I mean, I know, I know. You have to sit in a chair, you go to a meeting and you think, and you know, they're, those chairs look very nice that are out in the auditorium here. But these had thick cushions. And so it felt really comfortable and the back was a little more cushioned. I don't know how much more those would be than something like this.
We do need stackable chairs though.
These were stackable.
Really?
Yes.
Did you get the name of the brand name or anything?
No, but I could find out who, I could find out.
We do have to buy on state contract. So that might limit us. But yes, find out.
They were a state facility.
Find out. That would be great. Yes.
Okay.
Those are important things.
Well, it is when you're attending lots of programs.
If you're sitting and watching a movie at the library, you want to be comfortable if you're.
Yes. And you know, if we're going to be buying chairs, you know, and for a couple thousand dollars more, we could get something that is going to be really comfortable as opposed to something strictly utilitarian. I mean, why not? Okay. I will call a person in, it used to be Holcombe, now it's Bloomfield. I decided Holcombe wasn't a very fancy name.
Barbara, did Tony give us any like indications towards like a timeline when he wants us to spend that down?
Well, this was Tony. This isn't Marie.
Nope, sir.
So he, he, he kind of thought it should be done with deliberate speed or we should look like we were spending it down, which is why I think we want to start, excuse me, we can make an argument that we are doing this as we move forward by buying the furniture for the Bremen Room, looking forward to a new or new renovated, new facility, whatever it's going to be, and kind of earmark funds for that as well. So I think that as long as we're doing that, it's, it's okay. It's just that sitting there amassing money to be amassing money is, is not a good thing.
Okay.
Would you like to talk about the Writers in Books event?
Sure. November 1st, seven o'clock, we have Jason Mott coming. He's coming first to the Penfield Library, then he is going to one of the libraries, Central, I think he's going to. And then he'll be at a couple of private places. So we're very excited that we're the first one that he's coming to. The Friends have generously donated the money to pay for his speaking engagement and they've also donated the money to rent enough chairs for the event. I was wondering if the Gift and Memorial Fund might want to do the food and drink, you know? I don't think it would be more than $200, $300 to get bottles of water, maybe some tea and some cookies. I don't, I don't know how many people will come. We are definitely finding that although COVID is no longer a fear, for many people to come into the library, it does seem to keep our program numbers down still. A lot of the audience members that used to come to library programs don't want to sit right next to each other for an hour or two. So I, you know, it's very hard to say how many people would come. We are hoping for 300. It might be 100. I don't know. But we will do registration for this event. But if you'd like to donate that money from that account, and I would love it if all of you would come on November 1st and help us all welcome Jason Mott to our library and our community.
And his book is, what's the name of his book?
Jason Mott. It's called A Hell of a Book. Is the, is the most recent book.
Would someone like to?
Is this Olive Rochester Reads?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's Writers in Books. It's not the same.
Ah, Writers in Books. Okay.
Rhonda, is he doing the same presentation at all three libraries or is it? He's doing a question and answer with a very short presentation at our library, the same at, I think, I think it's the same at Central. And then when he goes to Writers in Books, he's doing an extensive hour long talk.
Is there, how do you feel about that? Is there a motion to?
Oh.
Jen? Thank you. A second? Rachel? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, all in favor?
So we're spending down our money.
Yes, we are. Two or 300 at a time.
Rhonda, what else do you need?
I know.
We could put a couple zeros next to that.
We have, we have a lot of, I mean, I'm still new. We'll be spending it.
Well, that's good.
I wouldn't worry about it.
This is something that isn't on our agenda, but it's, it's under new business instead of continuing business. And that is, we have two members who are leaving the board, Rachel and Melissa. And I.
Sadly.
Well, yes, it is sad. But I was also thinking it might be nice to get together for dinner to say goodbye and, and to wish them well. And there are a couple of options. And I thought it would be better if we all discussed it than, you know, somebody just saying, well, we've picked this date. So one option is on the 21st of December, when we have our December meeting, we could meet at 6:30, keep the meeting to a half hour and go out to dinner at seven, if you would like. Or we could pick another time and do that. And if anybody has any suggestions or very favorite restaurants, there would be 12 of us, Deanna, Rhonda, Linda, and the nine trustees. Does anyone have thoughts?
So it's December 20th, I think. But yeah, I think that would be awesome. Like right after.
Right after the meeting makes sense.
I just, so December 20th, we, it's my daughter's holiday concert at school.
That's.
See, that's going to be, I think there's more than one coming up for those kinds of things.
You're lucky you know in advance.
I know. Normally, we don't.
I was always surprised when those things happened. Is there another date that somebody would like to suggest?
The November meeting? I don't know. The 15th.
The 15th of November, the week before Thanksgiving?
That's when our meeting is in November? Sorry.
I believe so. It's the third Tuesday.
Okay.
That works for me.
November 15th?
Yes.
Yeah.
We were thinking about like Joe Gatz. Is that okay with everyone?
So are we suggesting dinner before or after? I'm sorry.
After.
Okay.
6:30 have our meeting, keep it short and.
So we'll announce that we're, for that month, changing the time of our meeting?
To 6:30.
Okay.
Okay. We will do that. Okay. Now, under continuing business, Rhonda, you wanted to talk about the budget?
Right. So we know that the town's tentative budget is, is, it's asking for more, more funding out of our unallocated balance than we had expected. So we have to consider our options. We can try to whittle down our budget so that they, so that the town doesn't take as much out of the unallocated balance. For those who are watching and not sure what the unallocated balance, basically, we have a budget each year and whatever we don't spend goes into a line for future possibilities, future needs. That's the unallocated balance. And last year, we did have a significant amount left at the end of the year. And so the town would like to take that and use it towards 2023. As you heard Naras say, we're right on budget right now. If anything, we will be adding again to our unallocated fund balance. So we can leave the budget as it is and the town would need to take more money out of that than they had in the past. The, last year, they took $50,000 out of it. This year, they would be taking 70. I looked at the lines, the budget lines, and I really don't see any place where we could cut. We were very, very conservative this year when we met and discussed the proposal. I think it would be very difficult to cut anyplace. Most of the increase is coming from personnel costs. And as you know, health insurance is going sky high, cost of living is going sky high. I, I, I think that we need the staff that we have right now. We're not adding to the staff. We just need to pay for the benefits and salaries. So I don't know where we would cut. So my, my suggestion to you is that we allow the town to take it from the unallocated fund balance, but we consider, we continue to be as, as frugal as we can and hopefully make it up by the end of the year.
I think we probably will. I know at the beginning of this year, we put in 81,000 that was left over from last year's budget. So that's still coming out ahead. I, what, I don't remember. I, I remember something and maybe Melissa, you remember it or Naras, that at one point, there was a suggestion that we allow the town to take $50,000 from our unallocated money. Do you remember that discussion at all?
I don't remember that.
Do you remember that? Maybe I'm just making it up. You know, maybe I thought I did and that I didn't know enough about it to have an opinion at the time.
Right. I don't recall that.
But we need, we have about $600,000 in there. We should have for a library our size. How much should we have, Rhonda?
Yeah, every town is different. I did have a conversation with Barbara Chirdo about, about the fact that we do have a healthy fund balance. I've been in libraries where they wanted more than, you know, 75%. I've been in libraries where they wanted 25%. It, our town is a conservative town and we've always been able to pay our bills. I don't know that we need as much as we have in our fund balance. And I think that, you know, the fact that you were without a director for a month and a quarter probably helped the fund balance, the leftovers for this year. We, it is better to have more money than less. And in the end, you know, the town only has so much money that they're bringing in. And if we're asking for the materials that we need and if we're asking for staff to keep the library open, the hours that we want, in the end, we have to pay somehow. And this might be the best way to pay at this point.
I think so. And I think that it's, it's, in a way, it's nice because we know the money will be there. And with the 25 or so from the Gift and Memorial Fund, we know that at the beginning of the year, we have enough to do that project.
Right.
And I think there's a lot of, I think that's a good thing, that we'll be able to see some results.
Good.
Does anybody have any differing opinions? Any other thoughts? Do you want to talk about the safety issues?
Right. So last week, I'm trying to think of what, you know, we've been so busy. What day of the week was that?
It was Wednesday.
It was Wednesday. Wednesday. We opened as usual. It was the first day of the Friends, the first regular day of the Friends sale. The Tuesday had been for the Friends only and the Wednesday was for the public. And, you know, we opened and we were very crowded. There were a lot of people at the sale. There were a lot of people in the library. And I was notified that there had been a phone call made to a town staff member that criticized the library and the Friends sale in, in a way that made the staff person feel that it was perhaps threatening. So we decided immediately that we needed to evacuate the building, you know, just to be cautious. We just had so many families inside the building. We couldn't take any risks. So Deanna led the staff evacuating the building. We talked to the rec department. We talked to the courts and the entire building was evacuated. The sheriff came with two people and they went through the entire building, did not find anything that was potentially harmful and told us we could re-enter the building and continue business as usual, which we did.
I think that's a very abbreviated version.
It is. It is.
We were told that there was a threat to the building. There was no more information. Rhonda was pretty much left on her own to decide what to do. She, she made the wise decision. And Judy and I were there because she came up to me and said, we've, there's been a threat made against the library. What do you think we ought to do? And we said, we both thought, you know, we need to evacuate the building. There's no discussion. I mean, it's not worth keeping the building open. And it was, we were fortunate. It was a beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day.
And so Deanna sprung into action. And I'll tell you, the library staff was out of there and I thought, an unbelievable amount of time. And they had, they all had. of there, and I thought, an unbelievable amount of time. And they had, they all had roles, and I saw Deanna looking at Miriam, saying, "Is everyone out?" Miriam said, "Everyone's out. I'm locking the door." And it took them maybe four or five minutes to clear the library, which I thought was really pretty amazing. Judy and I were working at the checkout desk, and we were telling people, "The building is being evacuated," and people were saying, "Well, you just need to do my books. You just need to check."
It's okay, I can stay here, they said.
Yeah. Maybe you can stay here. I'm not. But it also was about an hour or so before anybody came from the sheriff's department.
Or?
It was. I mean, if somebody had been bleeding, that would have been all over. It was really, it was, I was really kind of disappointed. I don't know who was in charge of notifying them, but we, if there was a threat that was serious enough that they had called us, we were told not to, or that's my understanding, that they were going to handle, the town was going to handle notifying the fire department and the sheriff's office. And I don't think they ever notified the fire department because the fire department would have been here.
I think that they were handling it from the town hall, and I think they were meeting with all of the necessary parties. And I think that's why it took an hour for the sheriff to come.
But they were not communicating that with us. So we did not know. And we were the ones who were dealing with the public, who was saying, "What's going on? Why are we out?" And it was, and it was, as I said, it was a lovely day, and people were fine, and there were some comments on Facebook that, you know, the questions of what was going on. And some people just said, "Oh, there are a lot of people there because it's a library book sale." I thought, well, that's as good of an answer as any. But it's just, and one of Rhonda's comments to me during that time was that she had been trying to meet with the fire marshal since she has been here. And I was going to say, "Maybe we should invite the fire marshal to come to a board meeting and talk to, and let him explain to us what his policies are and how he would like to handle situations like this."
Well, we do have procedures in place, and...
Well, we do. I mean, you, the library certainly did.
They are town procedures, and they were written with the fire marshal. And they, and Deanna put them into action immediately, and she did a fantastic job, and the staff knew the procedure. So that was all very essential to the success that we had that day. But the reason I put this on the agenda is because I know people are asking about what happened, and the public should know.
And we don't have an answer, do we?
We don't have an answer because there's an ongoing investigation still. That's what I've been told.
But there should have been some kind of communication communicated to us so that, you know, you feel like you have a handle on what's going on.
Yes. The first thing we heard was that there had been a series of phone calls to the fire marshal's voicemail, threatening something about the book sale and the library. We don't know what. So, and they were able, I believe, to figure out who made the phone calls because through electronics. I don't care who the person is, I would like to know what happened. Was the person arrested? Is it still a threat? I mean, those are questions that I think are legitimate for the library patrons to know and for the community to know. I mean, people should feel safe going into the library.
I agree. I know that Marie has been very involved. I know she's doing her best to get to the answers. I don't think there are answers yet, which is why I haven't been notified yet. But I'm sure they will be coming. Deanna and I are going, reviewing the procedures on our own, and we will bring them to the rec department and the court so that we're all on the same page. And we will speak to the fire marshal about this.
Good. And I think you need to tell us what the fire marshal says.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments about that incident or anything else? Nope. Brett?
Yes, ma'am.
You are the auditor this month. Would you like to talk about the claims?
Yeah. I just want to make a claim. I presented to the board to get approval for $14,419.22. Do we have a motion for approval? Me.
Niraj. Okay. Is there a second? Denise?
Barbara, I'm not sure that, I didn't hear us vote approval for the financial report. Did we get that, Deanna?
I don't think we...
We approved the minutes, but I don't think we did the financial report.
Well, we'll go back and do that. Thank you. I'm glad you caught that. First, let's vote on this. We have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve the claims voucher. All in favor? Let's pass. And Niraj, would you like to move that we...
Yeah. Let's move to accept the financials that I presented.
I'll second.
Jen will second. All in favor? Okay. Thanks, Rhonda.
Yeah, sure.
Good to have all those done. And our next auditor will be Judy Marinucci.
I thought it was Megan. I thought...
I switched.
No, Megan, Megan and Brett switched. Megan did it last...
I took her month.
She was supposed to do this month. Brett took over for her. So I believe that she is going to do it next.
Megan's doing it next month.
Okay. I had your name written down, but I...
I know.
You get November.
I get November.
Okay.
I'm going to get it in a way that works.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? Niraj and Brett seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.